To my left, we are right, Vice Chairman Mr. Tavares. Board members, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Chin, Mr. Himmel, Mr. Frankel. To my right, Ms. Murphy. Behind me, the head of inspection services, Mr. Duker. If you have a cellphone or a pager, if you please put it on vibrate or silent, not to interrupt the meeting. If anyone wants to speak or talk to each other, please go outside. If anyone's going to testify tonight, please stand and raise your right hand. You're going to testify, you think you might testify. If you don't take an oath, you're not going to testify.
You swear to the truth, to help, to help you down?
I do, thank you.
Do you have a motion to waive the minutes as of 9:26?
Mr. Chairman, I'm hoping to waive the minutes of our meeting at 9:26.
Second. On the motion, standing there, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so move. And open business, case number Z-1781, Donald Smith for special permit floodplain, finding to change the use of garage to a single-family home and floodplain all the way in District 31, Babcock Street, Councilor, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Rob Fleming, Fleming, Fleming. I do represent the applicant, Donald Smith, who's with, here with me this evening, as well as our engineer, Karen Brady. So we were here on the...
Twenty-sixth.
Couple of weeks ago, okay. We had, we presented, again, this is a proposal to demolish the existing garage on property 31 Babcock and construct a new single-family residence. We're here before this board for a finding, a change of use of the property, as well as a special permit floodplain. At the time, because we appeared before Conservation Commission, they didn't have a quorum, so we had to continue that matter. We did receive an order of conditions from Conservation on the floor of the back door last week.
Do you have those?
Excuse me?
Do you have one?
I don't have the order, no, I don't think that's been prepared forward to us, I guess. Either now. It was one request by this board on the 26th of September to try to center the House to meet the setbacks thirteen, thirteen inside. I think we had a variation of that, so, and we're still agreeable to that. To center the House on the property, and I believe it was discontinued because the order conditions had not issued yet from Conservation.
I'll be voting in favor, I just want to make sure it runs through Conservation. I know, Andy, there is, they're putting drainage down there, aren't they?
Yeah, I mean, not required.
But you know what you did?
But in the rear, the side, there's some drainage, and there's a small little berm. It's not going to keep, you know, a surge out, but we made some adjustments at the request of the Conservation Commission, there was a small berm in the rear of the yard as well.
And it's only one half short.
That's, that's correct, yeah. Well, we're meeting it because of the floodplain, we're meeting the requirement, ordinance requirement here, so, so again, all dimensional requirements are met with the construction of this home. Side, side back, rear, front, and height as well.
Any questions?
I have one.
One, Mark, this time.
Do you have a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm adding number seventeen dash eight, one, Donald C. Smith, for special permit floodplain finding, change the use of the garage to a single-family home and a floodplain all the way, District 11, premises number thirty, Babcock Street, Quincy. I make a motion to waive the special permit floodplain.
Second. On the motion, standing there, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so move. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you. Case number Z-1787, Paul Carnes for variance to construct an addition in Council Avenue as well. The applicant, the representative, Paul. Why don't you go over that floodplain you just come up with?
So, two weeks ago, I got to make a few adjustments. We brought it in, two feet on the side closest to my property line, two feet in from the back. We got rid of the front entryway, and we eliminated the kitchen, so it's a hundred and twenty-two square feet smaller than I proposed the first time.
So, uh...
Eliminated the kitchen, eliminated the front entry.
And, yeah, so there's, there's no door.
Now that we have eliminated that front entry, I'm probably going to put about six units in front of that also.
Any questions?
I have none.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Three letters that come in here in support, October ninth. Michael and Jennifer, who build in 66903. Rick and Nina Harmon, nine to Andrew Road. Emma and Ali and Marcy, seven. Uh, so a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and add another seventeen dash eight, seven, for variance to construct an addition on the premises number eleven, Andrew Road, Quincy, I make a motion to waive the variance.
Second. On the motion, standing there, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so move.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for doing that, Chris.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay. Case number Z-1748, Thomas O. for variance to construct a two-family home in a vacant lot in premise number one twenty-six, Intervil. The applicant, the representative, there.
Yes.
You have a question?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, trying to get our small, the business address at 14 Broad Street, Boston Mass, 02109. Today, we're here seeking leave from the former variance to demolish an existing two-family garage on the site and convert it to two-family dwelling. The zone is a residential B-zone district, and the variances are lot size, the required lot size for the area is nine thousand seven hundred fifty square feet. We're proposing six thousand square feet. The lot width, required lot width is seventy-five feet, we're proposing sixty feet square feet. Open space, requirement is fourteen hundred, we have eight hundred and fifty-two square feet. Front yard setback is at twenty-five, required, and we are proposing a lot. We meet all other setbacks and regional, dimensional regulations regarding two families requested. On August twenty-second, we had a committee meeting, a number of residents came out, we also had petitions circulated, petitions signed by people who supported the project, trying to look into the construction of two-family house that the owner wants to try to keep affordable for family members.
Who's been here?
The owner is going to try to move in some family members who are having a hard time finding a place in the area that's, that's important.
And, uh... No. Please, uh... Two bedrooms, you have to go over there. Thank you. Sorry, I'm late. Yeah.
Turn it out.
I quit laughing already. It was like, it's too big. Mistake, obviously.
Here, it's small.
I think you wanted to see something in the plan?
No, I, I, I wanted to do a presentation.
Okay. Want to talk about the design?
Yeah. Want to tell us what you built?
I'm getting ninety? Twenty-nine, twenty-six.
Okay, the proposed design is a two-family. And it is two bedrooms on the first floor, and also the additional living space in the basement for the unit number one. The unit number two is the entire second floor and a portion of the attic as well.
What, what are you putting in the attic?
Um, the attic is only the additional bedroom and the bathroom.
So one unit is three bedrooms, here three is two bedrooms?
The second, the second floor unit is four bedrooms.
Four.
And third floor is what?
He said two, but there's no, there's no bedroom in the basement.
No. Sorry, there's, there's one bedroom in the basement.
Yeah.
Yes, sorry. And that makes three bedrooms for the first unit, four bedrooms for the second unit.
I mean, it's almost like you... You're going to... You're using all four floors. Where you get the parking now?
We get four parking.
Four bedrooms.
It is a family, owner can occupy it.
It is, it's next weekend, ain't it? Make it now, two months from now, two years from now.
They haven't been in the area for long.
It just, it doesn't, people sell and buy all the time. You know that, I know. It's not about who's there now, it's who's going to be there next year. I just think it's too dense, that's my problem. I'm not going to have that. Any questions?
Uh, yeah, just one last question. How is the total project, how many bedrooms are there?
Will be seven bedrooms total for the that project, but we can go back to the one board and terminate some of those that could do that.
Well, we only have four parking spaces. It's not like there's several. My comments.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, same situation, I think it's overkill with the development.
Okay. Jim?
I have concern about the number of parking spaces relative to the number of bedrooms through this.
Too much.
Uh, all right, who's in?
I'll be in.
You're in? All right. So you've got a study in one that's bigger than the existing bedrooms, I'm looking at it as theoretically eight bedrooms, that's twice the parking spaces and that's, that's cars on the street. We don't have room for them, for you. Peter? All set?
All set.
Thank you, you can have a seat. Is there anyone here who wants to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call closed. We'll let her hear from the DPW.
We have reviewed the supplemental for the above referenced project and our comments are as follows. One, specify how much of previous area will be increased due to the development. Divide plans showing the existing site conditions, layout of utility, grading, drainage, and the construction details. Three, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Four, install survey monuments to delineate the public right of way. The monuments shall be set by a professional land surveyor. Five, provide dimensions and grades for the paving area in all driveway entrances. Six, upon completion of the project, as-built plans showing for utilities, buildings, footprints, reference bounds, and benchmarks defining the total site, facilities, and right-of-ways need to be submitted along the digital file. The as-built plans shall be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor or professional engineer.
All our part of hearing closed, is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided, first call? Second call?
John Rutherford, sixty-two Grand Mall Road. Basically, there's not enough parking here, way too dense. I looked at these plans before, and it looks to me like they could almost be like separate units in the basement, or they could all be Airbnb rentals, there's limited parking on Inteville, so, I mean, this is, if a more conventional two-family was to come along, then this could maybe be approved, but right now, this is way too dense of a property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have a letter here from the council. This is zoning board of appeals, case number Z-1748, one twenty-six, Intervil Street. Dear Chairman Akins, I am ready you to express my strong opposition to the zoning board of appeals, case number Z-1748, one twenty-six, Intervil Street. Submitted by the applicant, I think for variances to demolish the current garage structure and construct a new two-family on the premises as scheduled to be heard in the zoning board of appeals, May twenty-third, two thousand seventeen. The applicant has yet to reach out to me, reminding you this letter was written in May. It came a week before the first hearing, and that was postponed. I take this failure to follow the appropriate steps as noted on the forms provided by the building department as an indication as to how they will manage and operate their property. With little regard to the community, I respectfully question denied as requests. Thank you for your time and attention in this matter, and that letter was written in May, so... Last call, anyone opposed or undecided? All our part of hearing closed, I mean, it's, it's way too dense for me. So if you want to come back with a real set of drawings that fits the neighborhood, you won't be parking on, on the street. Because you're going to eat bedrooms, you get a lot of cars, I don't care what it is, you just got a lot of people, you got a lot of cars, and that'll be there, and it'll just cause a hassle for the neighborhood, and we just go it out, that'd be my opinion, so...
Well, I, I'm supporting them coming back with new plans, cutting back some of those bedrooms perhaps, I don't need to make the four parking spaces, but that's the new kind of desk.
Cut the house back.
I agree, did you, did you meet with the council after that letter?
We tried on several occasions throughout the summer. We first contacted Council of Calm, which he in probably early May, and due to scheduling conflicts, he had budget areas and different things, we just couldn't get together on any time. Spoke to him several times on the phone, he always seemed to be very busy, you know, when we tried to schedule meetings, we went out, had an Bud's meeting, applied, and circulated petition. But I think the council took a lot of his personal feelings into it, which is fine. So we were never able to meet with the council on several cases. I know I submitted, for the record, a chain of emails that the council and I have gone back and forth on with regard to trying to set up some time to leave, and it just, just haven't materialized on my hands and delighted to meet with us about the project. But my client wanted to set us to move forward, so we did, and we understand the terms of the project, we're going to do here, I'll be clear with a second, I will go back with my client, you know, reevaluate the situation, the plans with regard to the number of bedrooms and juxtapose to the number of parking spaces. We can go back and look at that, maybe come back with a bit of a different design, maybe a more fair, a little less bedrooms or something like that. That was something that I will bring back to my client, not, not a problem.
Thank you, Jim?
Two questions, two cover, Rod, is that on the property that you're talking about?
That's right.
Yeah, that's going down.
Yeah, that's the only thing that's on.
Smaller house, smaller rooms, more, more compliant with setbacks.
Yeah.
I'd also like to see better green space than what's shown.
Okay.
My thinking plans, yeah. On November twenty-eighth. Reach out to the council right away with the new, with the new date.
I sure will.
November twenty-eighth? Does that work?
That works, okay.
On the motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, add number seventeen dash four-eight, ding bow, beret, unbow, for variance to construct a two-family home on a vacant lot on the premises number one twenty-six, Intervil Street, make a motion to continue hearing until November twenty-eighth.
Second?
Second.
On the motion, standing there, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so move. Case number twenty-eight.
Yeah.
If you get no problems in at least a week ahead of time, ten days.
Yeah, sure will.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Go ahead for the next one as well. I have a feeling what the result is going to be.
Want to save time?
We can if you want.
We can move this to the twenty-eighth.
Four times.
Both of them on for the twenty-eighth?
That's right.
That's a twenty-eight.
Case number Z... Z-1749, N. H. for variance to subdivide the existing lot and construct a new two-family on the newly created lot, ninety.
Again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, trying to get our small, the business address at 14 Broad Street, Boston Mass, 02109. With me is Mike Plum, from Plum Four Zero Architects, is the architect for the project. Again, we're seeking leave in the form of variance to subdivide the existing lot and erect a new two-family dwelling. The zone is a residential B-zone. The variances are lot size, again, the required lot size is nine thousand seven hundred fifty square feet, we're proposing six thousand four hundred square feet. Lot width is seventy-five feet, we're proposing lot width of sixty-four feet. Open space is fourteen hundred, and we have a proposal, open space of one thousand one hundred and eighty-nine. We meet all other permission requirements, setbacks, with regards to the project. Again, we had Bud's meeting on August twenty-second, we have petitions signed by a member of the neighbors who are supporting the project, and I'll stop there. If you have a question, I don't want to take off the whole time.
Question is, he has the best lot in the neighborhood, most prettiest lot in the neighborhood right there. Why would he do that? Is he moving? He's going to subdivide that lot?
No.
I mean, he slipped his whole yacht, he's got no more yacht. That's like a shame, really is, exactly. I just, I look at property, I say, it's probably the most prettiest property in the neighborhood, and he's trying to destroy it all, so... I, I got, really, I, I just, I feel like that should be up with him, that's just my opinion, so I'll, I'll stop there.
The bedrooms are in, at this point?
But three.
Six, total, four, two units, but this building is a little bit smaller than the other, like I say, the number of bedrooms. If we go back to this.
And the general spaces, do you have?
Four. But we can't have more.
Obviously, that's just one of the things. Over the stage. What do you want to say?
Any other question?
No questions.
No questions, no questions. Thank you. Anyone want to speak in favor? Did you have a petition here with, uh... Was that for this one, or the other?
Yeah, that would be the one.
We got a letter here from, uh... Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call closed. Got a letter here from the DPW?
We reviewed the supplemental for the same bedroom, the above referenced project, our comments are as follows. One, specify how much of previous area will be increased due to the development. Two, provide plans showing the existing site conditions, layout of utilities, grading, drainage, and the construction details. Three, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Four, install survey monuments to delineate the public right of way. The monuments shall be set by a professional land surveyor. Five, provide dimensions and grades for the paving area in all driveway entrances. Six, upon completion of the project, as-built plans showing for utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, and benchmarks defining the total site, facilities, and right-of-ways need to be submitted along the digital file. The as-built plans shall be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor or professional engineer.
All our part of hearing closed, is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call? Second? On the motion, standing there, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so move. Case number twenty-eight.
Yeah.
If you get no problems in at least a week ahead of time, ten days.
Yeah, sure will.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Go ahead for the next one as well. I have a feeling what the result is going to be.
Want to save time?
We can if you want.
We can move this to the twenty-eighth.
Four times.
Both of them on for the twenty-eighth?
That's right.
That's a twenty-eight.
Case number Z... Z-1749, N. H. for variance to subdivide the existing lot and construct a new two-family on the newly created lot, ninety.
Again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, trying to get our small, the business address at 14 Broad Street, Boston Mass, 02109. With me is Mike Plum, from Plum Four Zero Architects, is the architect for the project. Again, we're seeking leave in the form of variance to subdivide the existing lot and erect a new two-family dwelling. The zone is a residential B-zone. The variances are lot size, again, the required lot size is nine thousand seven hundred fifty square feet, we're proposing six thousand four hundred square feet. Lot width is seventy-five feet, we're proposing lot width of sixty-four feet. Open space is fourteen hundred, and we have a proposal, open space of one thousand one hundred and eighty-nine. We meet all other permission requirements, setbacks, with regards to the project. Again, we had Bud's meeting on August twenty-second, we have petitions signed by a member of the neighbors who are supporting the project, and I'll stop there. If you have a question, I don't want to take off the whole time.
Question is, he has the best lot in the neighborhood, most prettiest lot in the neighborhood right there. Why would he do that? Is he moving? He's going to subdivide that lot?
No.
I mean, he slipped his whole yacht, he's got no more yacht. That's like a shame, really is, exactly. I just, I look at property, I say, it's probably the most prettiest property in the neighborhood, and he's trying to destroy it all, so... I, I got, really, I, I just, I feel like that should be up with him, that's just my opinion, so I'll, I'll stop there.
The bedrooms are in, at this point?
But three.
Six, total, four, two units, but this building is a little bit smaller than the other, like I say, the number of bedrooms. If we go back to this.
And generally, what are the spaces, do you have?
Four. But we can't have more.
Obviously, that's just one of the things. Over the stage. What do you want to say?
Any other question?
No questions.
No questions, no questions. Thank you. Anyone want to speak in favor? Did you have a petition here with, uh... Is that for this one, or the other?
Yeah, that would be the one.
We got a letter here from, uh... We got a letter here from, uh... Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call closed. Got a letter here from the DPW?
We reviewed the supplemental for the same bedroom, the above referenced project, our comments are as follows. One, specify how much of previous area will be increased due to the development. Two, provide plans showing the existing site conditions, layout of utilities, grading, drainage, and the construction details. Three, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Four, install survey monuments to delineate the public right of way. The monuments shall be set by a professional land surveyor. Five, provide dimensions and grades for the paving area in all driveway entrances. Six, upon completion of the project, as-built plans showing for utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, and benchmarks defining the total site, facilities, and right-of-ways need to be submitted along the digital file. The as-built plans shall be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor or professional engineer.
All our part of hearing closed, is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call? Second call?
Sixty-two Grand Mall Road, John Rutherford. This is one where it's only one parcel, and they want to subdivide the parcel into two parcels?
Yep.
Right. Okay, so, I am strongly against subdividing any parcel into two non-conforming parcels. That doesn't make any sense. If you have a large enough parcel where you can subdivide it and still have a conforming parcel, then you may think about that, would make some sense, and this one actually should be denied considering they're the same applicant that you might approve their next one, so to ask for two projects at the same time is a little bit strange for me.
Not completely, two different clients, it's just two different people.
Yeah. Oh, their projects have nothing to do with each other?
No.
Oh, okay, well, conveniently, they have the same people. I, I can say that from the last Inteville meetings, he's not the first people to develop on Inteville. About a year ago, there were people, and I, I know for sure that people moved out of the neighborhood on that street because of the development that has already been going on, and the people who live in the neighborhood need some relief, and the relief is going to be given to them from the zoning board not giving relief to certain people, so this is someplace where no relief is needed, and that big lot can stay there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else opposed or undecided? Could be exact same letter here from, uh, Council of Calm, which he, Chairman Akins, I'm writing to oppose that project at ninety. All our part of hearing closed, is there anyone opposed or undecided? Call us out in the hearing close. Let me just, I just, let's go ahead. That's one beautiful piece of property, and I just, I just can't afford to ask people. So you guys decide.
I'm a note. Well, I, I'm...
You know, if you want to change it, whatever, it's up to you.
I, I would just assume, have them come back on, uh, November twenty-eighth, would be something different.
Comments?
I agree.
Mr. Chin?
What is the hardship there? There's a weed mine.
Well, the, the lot size, and a little bit of slope on the lot, that may, you need to, to that particular neighborhood, so, I mean, and there will be no, all the other properties around are residential in nature, so there'd be no harm to the neighborhood. So, the, the, the geography issue is...
That's what you're saying?
It's, it's very small, it's a slight, slight incline. I don't think it's very small.
Frankel?
My question is answered. Yeah, I mean, if you want to come back, I, I dislike it intensely, I actually agree with John here, John gets chopping up a really nice piece of property and crowding the living daylights out of that area.
I'm just going, going to call some of the...
I'm sorry.
On the motion, the twenty-eighth?
Yeah, I think so. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, add number seventeen dash forty-nine, dead weight for a variance to subdivide the existing lot and construct a new two-family on the newly created lot, ninety. Thank you.
Brother on in new business, case number...
I could change two questions. Two come to Rod, is that on the property that you're talking about?
That's right.
Yeah, that's going down.
Yeah, that's the only thing that's on.
Smaller house, smaller rooms, more and more in compliance with setbacks.
Yeah.
And also like to see better green space than what's shown.
Okay.
My thinking plans, yeah. On November twenty eighth.
Reach out to the council right away with the new date.
I sure will.
November twenty eighth. Does that work?
That works, okay.
On motion please.
Mr. Chairman, number seventeen dash four eight, ding bo, beret, unbo, beret bearings, construct a two-family common, making live, on the premises number one twenty six, Interbell Street, make motion between two and November twenty eighth.
Second?
Second.
On the motion, CNN all in favor?
Aye.
Vote some more. Chair twenty eighth.
Yeah.
If you get no problems in at least a week ahead of time, ten days.
Yeah, sure will.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Go ahead for the next one as well. I have a feeling what the result is gonna be.
Want to save time?
We can if you want.
We can move this to the twenty eighth.
Both of them on for the twenty eighth?
That's right.
That's a twenty eighth.
Ace number Z. Z seventeen forty nine. N E for a variance to subdivide the existing lot and construct a new two-family on the newly created lot, ninety.
Again, Mr. Chairman, members of board, Lieutenant Derek Small, Business Director with T. Ross, Boston, Mass., on two one nine, with me is Mike Plum from Plum Four Zero Architects, Dr. Jacob and Project. Again, there's a duty in the form of variance to subdivide the existing lot and erect a new two-family dwelling. The zone is the residential B zone. The variances are lot size, again, the required lot size is nine thousand seven hundred square feet, we're proposing six thousand four hundred square feet. Lot width is seventy five feet, we're proposing lot width of sixty four feet. Open space is fourteen hundred, and we have an open space of one thousand one hundred and eighty nine. We meet all other convention requirements, setbacks, with regards to the project. Again, we have a board meeting on August twenty second, we have a petition signed by a member of the neighbors who are supporting the project, and I'll stop there. If you have questions, I don't want to take up the whole time.
Question is, he has the best lot in the neighborhood, most prettiest lot in the neighborhood right there. Why would he do that? Is he moving? He gonna subdivide that lot?
No.
I mean, he slipped his whole yacht. He's got no more yacht. That's like a shame, it really is. I just, I look at property, I'm saying, probably the most prettiest property in the neighborhood, and he's trying to destroy it. I got, really, I just, I feel like that should be enough. That's just my opinion, so I'll stop there.
Bedrooms are in this part.
But three.
Six, total of four, two units. But this building is a little bit smaller than the other, like I say, the number of heads. Can we go back to this?
The generally, what the space is?
Four. But we can't have more.
Any other question?
No questions.
No questions, no questions. Thank you. Anyone wanna speak in favor? Did you have a petition here with? Was that for this one or the other? Got a letter here from.
Same letter.
Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call, call. Got a letter here from the DPW.
Review the supplemental for the same that the above referenced project, our comments are as follows: One, specify how much of previous area will be increased due to development. Two, provide plans showing the existing site conditions, layout of utilities, grading, drainage, and construction details. Three, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Four, install survey monuments to delineate the public right of way. The monuments shall be set by a professional land surveyor. Five, provide dimensions and grades for the paving area and all driveway entrances. Six, upon completion of the project, as-built plans show no utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, and benchmarks defining the total site, facilities, and right-of-way need to be submitted along with a digital file. The as-built plans shall be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor or professional engineer.
On that part, I hear you close. Is there anyone opposed to run the side? First call? Second call?
Sixty-two Grand Mall Road, John Rutherford. This is one where it's only one parcel, and they wanna subdivide the parcel into two parcels?
Yep.
Right. Okay, so, I am strongly against subdividing any parcel into two non-conforming parcels. That doesn't make any sense. If you have a large enough parcel where you can subdivide it and still have a conforming parcel, then you may think about that, would make some sense. And this one actually should be denied, considering they're the same applicant that you might approve their next one. So, to ask for two projects at the same time is a little bit strange for me.
Completely two different clients, two different people.
Yep.
So, the projects have nothing to do with each other?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, conveniently, they have the same people. I can say that from the last interval meetings, he's not the first people to develop on interval. About a year ago, there were people, and I know for sure that people moved out of the neighborhood on that street because of development that has already been going on. And the people who live in the neighborhood need some relief, and the relief is gonna be given to them from the zoning board not giving relief to certain people. So, this is someplace where no relief is needed, and that big lot can stay there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else opposed to run the side? It'll be exact same letter here from Council of Calm Lookie, Chaminde, 'cause I'm writing to oppose that project at ninety. On that part, I hear you. Anyone else opposed to run the side and call outside the hearing floor? Let me just, I just, that's one beautiful piece of property, and I just, I just can't afford to ask people. So, you guys decide.
I'm a no. Well, I'm.
You know, if you wanna change it, whatever, it's up to you.
I would just assume, have them conduct on November twenty eighth, would be something
Comments?
I agree.
What is the hardship there?
Well, the lot size, and a little bit of scope on the lot, that maybe you need to that particular neighborhood. So, and there will be no, all the other properties around are residential in nature, so there will be no harm to the neighborhood. So, there's a geography issue.
That's what you're saying.
It's very small, it's a slight incline. It's very small.
Franklin.
My question is answered.
Yeah, if you wanna come back, I dislike it intensely. I actually agree with John here. It's chopping up a really nice piece of property and crowding the living daylights out of that area.
Just going to call some of the other.
I'm sorry.
On the motion, the twenty eighth?
Yeah, I think so. Mr. Chairman, the matter number seventeen dash forty nine, dead weight for a variance to subdivide the existing lot and construct a new two-family on the newly created lot on premises number ninety, Interbell Street, please, they're making motion, continue hearing until November twenty eighth.
Second.
On the motion, CNN all in favor?
Aye.
Vote some more. Chair twenty eighth.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Brother on in new business, case number Z seventeen ninety-two, eighty-three dice up. LLC for variance, finding divorce, existing bonds, subdivide the parcel, it's possible to destruct a single family home in eighty-three dollars. Counsel.
Thank you, I'm out on this one.
Family then.
Good evening, Jim, and members of the board, William Fale, on behalf of George Lang, manager of eighty-three dice up LLC. Just to remind the board, the history of this property, it currently exists on the property, half of a two-family building. So, in other words, there's one building, but only half of the building sits on one lot, the other half sits on another lot owned by another individual. The lot itself is a ten thousand six hundred and four square foot lot in the residence B neighborhood. So, technically, you could fit three residential units on a lot that size. What we're proposing, I'd like to thank the members of the neighborhood have taken a lot of interest in this property as part of their neighborhood, and I understand that, as well as for two, Council of Red Call. After we were here at last, when we were seeking a finding to construct a two-family on the residence, went back, came back again with a smaller two-family, which was denied by the board. We went back to the neighbors again and met with them, and my client agreed to a single family residence. Some of the neighbors had indicated that that would be something that did be amenable to. We prepared designs for a single-family house that would have been, I believe, three stories. By the way, there is a clerical error on the application, it says that the building height is two and a half in three stories, it's actually two and a half and two and a half stories, not three. So, the whole building will be two and a half stories. Went back, showed a design to the neighbors, they thought it was a little bit large, it was, I think, in excess of twenty-five hundred square foot, single-family home. We agreed to go back to the drawing board, reduce the size to two thousand square feet, which we did, brought it back to the neighbors, got some input, there was some concern over the number of bedrooms, there were four bedrooms at that time, they thought three would have been better, so the applicant modified his design to make it a three-bedroom home. The lot currently is not one of the prettiest lots in the neighborhood, quite frankly, it's a large lot, but on it is a non-conforming three thousand square foot garage, a single-story garage, that is really outdated and not of any use whatsoever, that it bucks right up against the lot line in the rear of the property. I think you can see it here in the back.
Yep.
Along the back here. So, that's a large structure that will be removed, and in its place, a single-family home, after the property is subdivided, would be constructed next to it. There'll be two parking spaces, one underneath, one to the side, you could actually put three parking, three cars there if you, if you had a car in the garage and you wanted to move the cars back and forth. So, as you can see, there's gonna be considerably more green space on the entire lot than there was in the past. We're asking for a variance, this is a different proposal. If you recall, last time we were in front of you, I had asked to be allowed to withdraw it, Mr. Chairman, you said, no, no, that, if you come back with a single, it's, you know, and ask for a variance, at the time, we were asking for a finding, actually, not for a variance. I was told we wouldn't need to wait the two-year period, and I agree with that assessment. In fact, I've looked at the law, and chapter forty-eight, section sixteen, seems to indicate that, you know, first of all, we weren't looking for a finding or a variance at the time, we were only looking for, I mean, excuse me, AI. A special, yeah, special permit or a variance, we were looking for a finding at the time. So, hopefully, the neighbors, some of whom I've spoken with, others I haven't, some have indicated that they were, they thought it was a good effort on the part of the applicant to comport to the neighborhood's wishes, that's what he's tried to do. The other matter is under appeal, actually, on the finding issue, that would obviously be withdrawn if this matter were to be allowed, and we're hoping that the board recalls the history here, appreciates the neighborhood's support, which we do, and I know Mr. Lang has always been a gentleman, and has always been willing to listen to the neighbors, and has, in fact, comported his design and his project to the wishes of the neighborhood, and he wants to be a good neighbor. So, it's nineteen hundred and fifty square foot, single-family home, thirty-one point six feet high, two and a half stories, with three bedrooms on the second story, and half a garage, a garage, and then a kitchen, dining room, the living room on the first floor. And that's about it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
No, I, I know that's what the neighbors were looking for down there, to put a single family home, they asked a lot, so, I commend you for doing what the neighbors have asked so far. Any comments?
No questions. Good for now, no questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone, is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? First call? Second call? Third call, call. Got a letter here from the DPW?
Review this supplemental for the above referenced project, our comments are as follows: One, specify how much of previous area will be increased due to the adopted. Two, provide plans showing the layout of utility grading, drainage, and construction details. Three, provide dimensions and grades for the paving area and all driveway entrances. Four, repair wall and timberly trenches and public right-of-way with controlled density built into a red. Five, upon completion of the project, as-built plans show no utilities, buildings, footprints, reference bounds, and benchmarks defining the total site, facilities, and right-of-way need to be submitted along with a digital file. The as-built plan shall be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor or professional engineer.
On that part, I hear you close. Is there anyone opposed to run the side? Opposed to run the side, please, that's a full statement. You can stand right there, that's fine.
Okay.
Well, first of all, a challenge at this meeting tonight is legal.
Yes.
First of all, you deny his appeal, and repetitive petitions require him to go back to the planning board, not just you people, but the planning, and get the majority vote by the planning, to even vote a public hearing. So, first of all, I'm saying, this is illegal this year from tonight, because he hasn't done it. That's under section sixteen of chapter forty-eight, and supposedly, the lot department is supposed to review that today. Currently, the building department didn't get an answer. Now, in terms of the variance request, section ten of chapter forty-eight specifically says, you people are required to find special conditions, not what he wants to do, but soil conditions, lot size, shape and topography of the land. That land is no different than anybody else's land. Just because he has a garage on it, that doesn't mean a dime thing, or something. So, opposed to the variance, as well as this year? Thank you.
No. Is there anyone else opposed to run the side? Second call?
I am Ian Doyle, I live at seventy-seven, as I said. Thank you for the opportunity to just seek some clarification on a few things. I found a number of discrepancies between the plans the building department has on file for the proposed development and the dimensional form, so if I could just get some clarification. Councilor Fale and I had already talked earlier about the three-story versus the two-point five, and he has indicated that they're both two-point five stories, so, but the dimensional form indicates the minimum lot area for dwelling unit as not applicable under the ordinance requirements and the requested conditions. I thought we had a minimum lot area by zoning regulations, so I don't understand why it would say not applicable on the dimensional form. And then, the ratio of the total floor area to the lot area numbers on the dimensional form are not accurate. I was joking with Councilor Fale that he should hire me to go over his FAR forms, because if you're gonna use the gross area for the buildings, when you do these, the existing building gross area, according to the city, is three thousand three hundred and eight square feet. The proposed lot size is four thousand one hundred and fifteen square feet. So, you could divide the building lot by the, the house by the building lot, and get point eight, if not point four, which is what he has indicated on the form. It's that's on the dimensional form, and on the plan, it says point one six. So, the point eight is more than the point four minimum ordinance requirement. And then, the proposed building gross area, so the, for the new building, would be two thousand three hundred and eighty square feet, proposed lot size is six thousand four hundred and eighty-nine, and when you divide that out, it's in a floor area ratio of point three seven, not point three one, which is indicated on the dimensional form and plan. So, basically, your, in this, you'd be creating two substandard lots, so if the finding and the variance is granted. The site setbacks listed on the dimensional form are not in compliance with the zoning regulations. I know that for the one house that already exists, since it's really half of a two-family, obviously, the left side, you're not gonna get the correct dimensions, but for the other things, if there's still a lot within the regulations. The zoning cost for minimal open space is seven hundred square feet per unit, and it looks like on the dimensional form, existing conditions are listed as eight hundred, I don't know if it means eight thousand, because it has a comma in it, and the requested conditions say, just say greater than seven hundred, I don't know if you could find out what those actually are versus just saying they're greater than seven hundred. And then, the dimensional form lists two parking spots for the existing house, and three parking spots for the proposed, the schematic plan we received, some of us received.
Excuse me, are you listening?
Yeah, I'm listening.
Okay. We're coming along on the floor.
Follow along on this, thank you very much.
She's talking to you.
That's all right, she's talking to the whole boy.
The schematic.
I'm trying to figure out a date here. Thank you.
The schematic plan we received shows three parking spots for the existing house, so I'm not sure it's, they're listed two, but on the schematic plan, the diagram we received, it shows three, so I'm just wondering what it really is, if it's two or three.
We can put the third one there, straight away. Is it three spaces? Yeah.
I think it may be three more pattern for the whole house.
Yeah, the plan, I mean, just with the.
One in front of the garage and one down there.
But even in the, the street, it's in the, in the existing house, it shows three on this schematic plan, the plan that we received, and it's only showing two on the regular plan. So, I don't know if the existing house, please.
On the, it's only required, they have to, so, if it's, if there's, there's three on the, on the schematic plan, that's how many there's going to be.
Right.
But the requirement is two.
Right.
But your real plan, I'm sure.
There's three, there's three in the garage.
There's, yeah, there's three in the garage.
Right, but I mean, that's the schematic for planning, so the one that they're gonna build that is off.
Because we're gonna build a cheap parking spot, and if you think, if you think better.
No.
I just want them to match. I mean, I just want it, I just want to know what's going on, rather than.
I was, I was, I was saying it was three spots, thank you.
Anyway, I just feel like the presentation, I just wanna see an accurate depiction of the proposal, so that we really know what's going on, because I think sometimes the forms end for past history, they haven't matched, so I would just like to have them make sure everybody knows what's accurate and what's true. Because the FAR, when I calculate it, is not point four, it's point eight, so when you're making a decision, just to know.
Point three eight, what'd you say?
Um, point three six, instead of point three one, and then for the other, for the existing house, because the lot size will be smaller, I come up with point eight, not point four, which is indicated on the dimensional form.
So, we got a lot. This is the new point. I didn't even say that. Council, see, come up here a second.
Sure.
This is two.
Yeah.
You get, you get this one here. Yes, and after it's being moved, these, these are all right.
That's, that's my understanding. I'm not being too serious, but that's what I'm trying to get. Now, the existing.
Point two.
Floor area ratio is one, the floor area is one thousand.
You're getting rid of the big two.
We're getting, we're getting rid of three thousand square foot.
Right.
In terms of the, the lot size, minimum lot size, I think we, we stay what we're requesting, we're subdividing it into two different lots, four thousand, change, six thousand four hundred.
Right. Switch to four, you have point two.
It was point four, that should be point eight, that should be.
How, you tell me how you.
Because you take the existing house, three thousand three hundred, and you divide it by the four fifteen, which is, or forty-one fifteen, which is the proposed lot, because you can't be dividing by the existing house, you split it.
You have point three thousand, it's four, and it's back two on that lot.
Yes.
Right. Yeah, so, lot ratio, you're taking that building off there, too.
Right, so the green space is not an issue, I mean, whether it's over, as long as it's over seven hundred, it's all right, but I just wanna make sure the floor area ratio is.
So, if we do thirty-three away, you're in about, about forty-one fifteen, I'm getting point eight?
This is not twenty-three. It's nineteen fifty.
It's, it's, it's not.
Nineteen fifty.
Nineteen ninety-five, thank you.
It's nineteen ninety-five, the house, the living space, that's not the.
No, the, yeah, the living.
That's, that's, the garage is not included in that floor area ratio.
No, for this, yeah, they are.
I don't believe they are.
It's every building on the lot, whether it's a garage or a house.
So, it's twenty, I get twenty-three eighty for the proposed house, not the living space of the house, but the.
Okay, so that's point three seven.
Yeah, so that one's you take the seven, the existing is point eight, not point four.
Which one? The requirements, it's a point three seven, new building is on the.
It just, yeah.
Which garage you talking about?
The one that's inside the house, the big car.
The one underneath.
Oh, oh, oh.
The first floor of the house.
Because the existing garage slash car would be point eight.
Right, so you don't count that.
So, it's point three seven, which is, which is under the point four.
Yeah.
Floor area ratio in any way, for the new structure. The old structure is, I'm not sure what the square footage of that, of that house is.
It's on the new block.
But the, the floor area ratio was actually improved by the, by the taking down of the garage.
No, it's not by the way you're having your formatism, it's point, it's point eight versus you had, what, point two?
That wasn't included, the garage wasn't included in that, that calculation.
Well, it's point eight now, point four is what's legal.
Engineer, yeah. The Duke, yep. Engineer did, suppose, you know, this is wrong, point two, it's supposed to be point eight, this is point three seven.
The point three seven is not the issue, the, the issue is the other, whether it's point four or point eight. So, in the event it's, it's point eight, we'd be asking for a variance on the floor area ratio, as well as the, the minimum lot size, the width of the lot.
We'll figure it out.
In the side, side.
We'll get back to that.
All right, good.
My last thing is just the same, so I won't repeat it, but the, for granting variance is, it's supposed to be related to soil condition, shape, or geography of the land. And I have a petition signed by many of the neighbors, that they are not interested in seeing this go forward, so. Do you want me to mark it again as to who already spoken? I don't know if, who's going to speak. Did you, did you mark that?
Yeah, yeah. Is there anyone else opposed or undecided, Lars?
Thank you, Linda Laracy, 93 Dyzard Street. I remember them when we shut, we shut them down last year after five times meeting here. And we had a neighborhood meeting when he came up with the new plans, so they went this detailed. And while the meeting was going on at the lot, his tenant, late tenant Patrick, was, "When we go on a weed whacking." And I'm like, "Patrick, we're trying to have a meeting here," and he goes, "I know I'm doing what I'm told to do." So during the whole meeting, which I thought was kind of weird, but, and all these plans that he gave us, it's all detailed about the plants and everything, but not about the house. You need a ruler to figure out how tall it is, how wide it is, how wide it is. So forthcoming with the information about the plants, but not about the house. And seeing that it's a duplex side by side, and half of the duplex is on this lot, and currently there's two to three cars on that lot, living in that duplex, daily, where are they going to park during this construction? On the street? There is no street parking. And then, when they do do construction, I mean, it's going to be heavy equipment, it's going to be dust, it's going to be dirt, it's going to be noise, it's going to be dripping up the street. And it's already a one-way street, and going around, and we're at the end, and I'd like to know if they do get the okay, what are the legal construction hours? Who do I call at six o'clock on Sunday morning? When my next door neighbor who bought the house has a full crew there on Sunday with an air compressor at 6:30 in the morning? You know, they don't have to live there, and they don't really seem to care. They just want to make money. And anybody that lives there or rents a house, I try to tell them to pick up the trash when trash day is, and they don't all of a sudden speak English. There's nobody to call, there's absentee landlords. I think this is all just a fluff show, and, you know, as you have a reason already pointed out, look at all the differences in the size and actions come up with already. I'd like to see some more of an honest approach, instead of somebody doing landscaping when we're trying to have a meeting, to come to a decision. And work with us, not against us. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Construction hours is 7:00 to 5:00 p.m., 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., 9:00 to 5:00 p.m., weekend departures.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else opposed or undecided?
Yeah. Laura Laracy, 93 Dyzard Street. When the attorney feeling was going through the history of this, because we've been here many times, there was a proposal for a four-bedroom. That was, I believe, part of the neighborhood meeting, and we were, the neighbors were concerned because of four bedrooms, could be potentially two people in each bedroom, could be eight cars, don't know. We asked that it be downsized. So, the next proposal that came across our email was a three-bedroom with the fourth bedroom renamed a sitting area. That was very frustrating for me, and I know some of the other neighbors, just to rename a room a sitting area. They have since changed that, so it's working, so I believe they've got a washer and a dryer in there, they might even have an extra closet or.
They have laundry in there.
Laundry room in there, but I just wanted to note that because that wasn't part of the, it's just been an ongoing frustrating cycle of events here. In addition, at every single meeting, Ann Doyle does a lot of work going through all of the specifications and the site plans. And bottom line is, all of the plans have consistently been inconsistent. So how are we supposed to know what is actually going to be built? It looks like the sheer driveway appears to be addressed, because they were originally going to have the new building, and the 83 Dyzard have a sheer driveway. It looks like that may have been addressed, but I'm not fully confident again, because I don't know from the dimensions, and in looking at it in a very small plan that I got, which is why I asked Brad to let me see the plan. And then the last note I just want to state is, at 83 Dyzard, the landlord has been absent with yard maintenance. The, they had repeatedly reached out to the landlord, the owner of the property at 83, requesting that the lawn be mowed. It got to the point, they were embarrassed because they had put some flowers out there, they asked Gil, who lives across the street, who's present here. To borrow her lawnmower, because they wanted to mow the front lawn. I did see that there were people above, three weeks or so ago, a team of people did some weed whacking, that's the first time I've ever seen it. And then, there's minimal, if any, snow plowing that's being done with the existing lot on 83, so I still have concerns with that. I understand that it's two different, looking to do two different buildings, but you still have one owner at 83 that we will still continue to potentially have issues with. So again, without having the full picture, I oppose this.
Is there anyone else opposed or undecided, council?
Just to address.
No, not you, council. Sorry.
The other council.
Sorry.
I feel like I haven't seen you in a while, Marty. Pleasure.
You've been lucky.
One, one could argue. For the record, Brad Crowell, the council, 65 years old. You know, not to sort of regurgitate everything that's been said here, but I was sort of thinking, you know, on my way over here, we've been talking about this for probably a year, and there has been multiple iterations, and, you know, multiple owners, and multiple conversations, which, which is healthy, I think, anytime that you're looking to introduce development into a neighborhood. So I am a proponent of discussions. I do a couple things. I had a conversation today with Commissioner Duker, and I was just sort of looking to validate sort of the sequence there. I apologize if it was said, I was having a conversation back there, but like, is, does this require, based on past history, a remittance or an appearance before the planning board? Is this the alpha and the omega this evening?
It should. So we can hold that decision and send it to planning.
Is that your understanding, Jeff?
Yes.
Your conversation?
Thinking with whole final action, that's what's going to happen, to get the approval of the planning board.
Well, I maintain it's required by law.
Sure, you're out of law. You're out of law.
Thank you.
You only have to be a general officer. You're out of law. You're out of law.
They can't take final action, is what it's missing. No, they can't take nowhere.
So that, and obviously I think that any application, you know, whether it's this order, any much of that matter, there should be some sort of nautical validation before it goes forward, which, you know, I would assume would be standard practice.
We're going to hold that, I'm going to ask them to hold the decision until it goes to planning, gets their approval.
So it'll go from here.
Yep.
To planning.
Yep.
Which will trigger a public notification, which will trigger another public hearing, right? And then it.
That's their business, not mine.
Right, right, and then it comes back here? That, I'm just trying, again, like.
And it won't make eyes at you, correct?
All right, so we're looking at a couple more stops. Okay, again, I just want to be clear, because it's my job, right, as a representative, to articulate.
What the determination by the planning board is to determine whether this project is substantially more different than what we've seen before. That's the only thing that's going to be.
That's a prior application. Correct. All right, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Anyone else? All in fine gearing closed. And like I said, I just want planning to give their blessing that this is a completely different project than the last two family and all that. And that's why I didn't ask them to continue, which is put in a petition together for a single-family home, because that's what the neighbors asked for, it's a completely different project than the last. So with that, any rough idea, Mr. Duker, on time?
I'm going to check and see if we can't get on the agenda for this month. I'm not sure of the dates. And if it's possible, we can.
I, I'm not sure that it has to go to the planning board first.
No.
I don't think that the statute requires it to go first. I don't think it even has to go to the planning board, that's my position. There hasn't been a final action on you, on the plan that was denied, notwithstanding because it's under appeal, but notwithstanding that argument, I don't really have an issue going to the, to the planning board.
And, and my issue is, it's a completely different project, and planning is going to give you their blessing, and they should. And they say no, it's no, but I think they should say yeah. It is a completely different project than what we're supposed to. And I think it makes it clean that way.
And I do take issue with it.
Yeah, something.
There were different plans all along.
There were.
Because we were trying to comply with two requests of these neighbors. Quite frankly, I'm completely shocked, because I thought the neighborhood meetings went very well. If there were issues with this, everybody knows where I am, we've reached out to the board council, we've had a number of neighborhood meetings, we changed the plans three times because of the request of the same people who came here, who said, "Well, do it this way." Okay, we'll do it that way.
Council, I think what I heard, what I heard from that is, this owner's absent from that property. He's not doing what he's supposed to. I think that's what they're saying. That's what I heard during tonight's meeting.
That's not what, that's not what we heard at, at, at the neighborhood meetings.
That's not what I heard here tonight.
And then, and when we left last time, and I said, "Well, you know, I, I'm not sure that the neighbors would be satisfied with anything going here." Every one of the neighbors stood up and said, "No, we would accept a single-family there."
I made, I made exception to that, though. I did not.
Well, hey, hey, let, let him, he can be at rate what he heard at a meeting and then.
I mean, with this tapes of me.
We can't be cross-talking here, because he here all night.
And then, when I asked to withdraw the, the last petition, I was told, "No, it's not necessary to come back with a single-family."
Right.
That's a substantially different project.
And that's what I.
And I would agree with that, since I was looking for a finding, and now I'm looking for a variance.
Right.
And a subdivision.
Right.
With a single-family rather than a two-family.
Exactly.
On, on, actually, a lot of land that would allow for three units.
I think it's just a little plan in this way, council, if they, I, I feel better if they put their stamp on to, and I, and I think they should, because it's a completely different project.
So, we, we got to go to the planning boards, then back there for, for voters this board, or?
Yeah, and, and that should happen within the month.
Mr. Chairman, I expect you to hear back in a moment with final, when the date is for the planning board, and I'll know when they can get on with the next one.
Okay, can we take five? Everyone take five, and do what you got to do, and see you back here in five minutes. Have any attention please, to back order. Council, we're going to do this November 28th. They'll give you a chance, you're not going to be able to get in this meeting. I think it's Wednesday. Meeting is Wednesday, right?
Uh, the 18th.
Oh, the 18th. He can't get in?
There's not enough notice, 14-day notice.
Okay.
What month is that, excuse me?
November 28th, we're going to make a motion. Have a motion, please.
Uh, yes, because I was saying one month, the FAR was figured out.
3.5.
And it looks just 2.5.
2.35.
0.35, so it's under the, it's under the .4, as I.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
It was the.
Thank you.
But for the existing house?
For the existing house, it's 1650 for the floor area ratio.
The proposal, the proposal that we have in front of us.
Right, that wasn't the one being questioned. It was the .8 versus the .4 of the existing house, with the smaller lot.
Number 17-92. April 12 Dyzard Street LLC, Florida Derricks, finding to the bossy existing barn and subdivide. The posse of the two parcels have instructed a single-family home in a newly created lot, premises number 783, Dyzard Street, Quincy, making a motion to continue the hearing until November 28th.
And if we could get the mention forms filled out again for the meeting. Second, second, another motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's a move. Council, if we can have those re.
We'll do that.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
And a new business, Mr. Hill, you're in. HZ 1794. I'm sorry. For variance planning, that the change in use from a one-family to a two-family is not.
Is your phone?
Michael, what?
Wait a minute. Wait till the people stop talking. That the change in use from a one-family to a two-family is not substantially more detrimental in variances for lot size width and paving the front, you had said back in the premise number 162, President Slane, the applicant, the representative here.
Mr. Chairman, our members direct, my name is attorney Jack P. Milgram. I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant, with me this evening, Jim Chen, project architect, Mr. Patrick Rosenberg, the project engineer. I do have with me this evening a revised site plan, which I'd like to add up if I could.
There's two parking spaces?
There's two existing parking spaces.
I have a copy of that.
Counselor, they can get it out, please, doctor.
Thank you. Question of the client is trying to do is change use of this property from one family to a two-family. The properties and process of being sold, the buyer's getting a mortgage, the buyer's actually been approved for a mortgage, but the lender's requesting that the use of property be changed from the one to it. So, if you take a look at the proposed architectural plan, you'll see that we're proposing to add one bedroom to the part of the house that's going to be legalized. Whoever's in order to compensate for that, we're more than willing, the board feels that it's necessary to remove one bedroom from the other part of the house, so that there won't be any change in the number of bedrooms in the property, certainly from the back of the architectural plan that indicates that. So there really isn't going to be any change, what's going on inside the house in regards to sleeping rooms, there isn't going to be any change at all to the footprint of the building, the exterior of the property. Property's going to look the same, as it obviously has since it was built, the number of bedrooms either will increase by one, or as I said, we can compensate for that, taking one bedroom out from the other part of the house. That's, that's what we're looking to do, and we see the approval on that.
I mean, the plans, even if you're taking out the, the two parking spaces, you want a two-family house, when you get two spots to park. Where, where, with all the bedrooms that are in that house already, you probably need four spaces. Never mind the two, two used. I just don't understand.
Let me, let me, maybe I'm not being clear.
No, I understand what you're saying, I'm the same.
No, no, about, about, I apologize, I don't mean to interrupt you in regards to the parking spaces. It has two existing spaces. The prior plan that was submitted shows two additional spaces, which isn't actually, no disrespect to the project engineer, when I asked him to prepare the plan, I hadn't asked him to do that. As you may recall, I was here two weeks ago on a, at the front of the street, 240 President's Lane. We had a very long discussion in regards to paving over a lots, and I think the board made clear his preference that I didn't want to see that, didn't want to set a presence for that in President's Lane. In light of the fact of what I heard, plus that isn't what I originally had asked the engineer to do, I had asked him to revise the plan, take that out, that's what we have for the board this evening. Building is pre-existing, unconfirmed. Building is pre-existing non-conforming. It's been there for many, many years. From what I understand, the people are gonna buy the building, they tend to live in the property. So if we can't sell it to them, we're gonna look to somebody else. There's a possibility we're paying up to invest with rentals. If you're gonna have a family living there, I assume that they intend to invest money into the property because they do intend to live there. Probably is a little bit older, so we could use some more. As I indicated, we, we do show one bedroom where the part of the house is going to be legalized. We certainly, we can compensate for that.
Is the people living down here now?
No, no. The house is vacant. Nobody's living down there. Nobody's lived there for you. The house is vacant.
No, not for you.
Senator Francis.
You get your chance.
I think what she's trying to say is, it hasn't been years that people have been living in the house. People have been living in the house until very, very recently. Question is whether people are living in the side of the house.
Right.
It's hard to, the answer to that is no, there's been no bedroom. So, so, so that, that's what we're seeking to do. And I, I know that, I saw one email that was sent where somebody said the deal was opposed. It said, well, the most from one to two still is gonna increase the burden on traffic on that street. And the only response I can make in regards to that, just what I said, the number of bedrooms isn't gonna change. So we certainly can take one out from the other part of the house. The lender doesn't care about the number of bedrooms, not looking for more bedrooms. The buyer doesn't care about more bedrooms, not a situation. We're trying to add more bedrooms because we're gonna put more tenants in to seek to get more money. Now, that's not what's happening. All we're seeking to do is change the use from one to a two. And that's what the lender is requesting rather than sale of the floor. That's why we're here.
I, I just, personally, I just, you don't have a pocket there to make that difference, Counsel. I don't even have any questions, Counsel. Anyone?
Same.
No questions. No. Mr. Hemel.
Did you say, is that?
Yeah.
Mike what?
I understand.
No question.
No question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call closed. A letter here from G P W. We've reviewed our project and have no comments. Anyone opposed around the side? Please step forward, state your name and address of the mic.
My name is Karen. I live at one fifty-eight President's Lane. I'm the director of that, I guess. When I got the notice in the mail, I saw a two-family. There's a two-family on my other side. I really don't have a problem with a two-family. I questioned how they're gonna need the parking. Wasn't happy that they might be parking in the front, taking away a little punch it's there. So I did go to the planning board. I also been in that house, but I've lived there since nineteen eighty-five. So I've been in that house before. It's the reverse of mine, but it's pretty much the same. And I wondered how it would be made into a two-family. And when I got there, to my surprise, no, there was no change to the house. There's a apartment downstairs that looks like it's been there a while and a little unclear about that. There certainly has been people living in and out of there. So other houses on President's Lane have had their driveways go down into the backyard. That was primarily my concern about a two-family, but this is not a two-family. And when I look at the plans that I saw, the one-bedroom has never changed into an office or a den or something on the second floor for the last empty nine years. Somebody's been living in that room because it's, the houses are very close to it. You know where the bedrooms are, including the attic bedroom. So I'm opposed for the reason it says. I don't see that that's a decent, I had to look up dwelling and any more apartment than a two-family because I think two-family, that's not what I saw on those plans. So by guess, by definition, that's the request. I don't see storage. I don't see whatever. And I'm concerned about the runoff when it rains coming down the hill.
Like a studio, typical story.
Yeah.
But one bedroom, same thing, it's just.
It's, so I looked at.
You can add a full one.
I looked at the plans and I tried to figure out where the kitchen went in down there because I'm unsure about that.
I don't know if it's in there.
Or where the bathroom is in the, who's that access? It looks like the door on the side. I don't know that that's to the stairs down, so I was questioning.
Those are the plans they submitted, so.
The door isn't moving.
The structure on the outside isn't changing. I keep saying the structure inside is going to change.
Right, but I don't see where the door plan, I'm, I'm trying to figure out where the door to enter really is. To the, I understand where the downstairs one is, but it appears to show on the proposed first-floor plan, another entryway on the side by the driveway. I think that goes to the stairs down.
Correct.
Correct, but that's changed to the outside structure of the house. Because there is already a door in the kitchen or somewhere. Anyway, I, I'm concerned. So I feel too congested, you know, who buys it now and lives there and then who sells it and can live for a second family fight? Just that concerns. And I will say that when it rains, coming, the rain coming off the hill comes right around the corner, downcoming one row. So again, the driveway concern was huge to me in terms of what was, where the wide goes. Because it does come down and fills the sideways into the yard, so.
Thank you. Anyone else opposed on the side? Give an address to the record, please.
Barbara Brubuchi, two thirty-one President's Lane. And I have the same concerns as she does. I'm, I'm surprised that that's a, a two-car driveway. It's very, it looks very short to me, if you ever.
I pulled, I pulled it and it is a two-car driveway.
It is? All right. So, and, and then it goes right down behind it.
Pretty smart car, but two-car.
Yeah, it would be too smart car. You put an S U V in there and it's just the one car. So how do you put a two-family in there with all the parking? President's Lane is a mess with parking. The T is there. We've got Sunily Apartments. We have several other condo apartment buildings. You can't get your groceries in the house because they're parking everywhere. And everybody seems to be able to get a sticker, even if they have a parking space off the street. They're in their driveway with their stickers. Well, I can bring you photos.
Oh, I, I, I know people of them. I don't know, or must not.
Yeah, so again, two-family is, they're, they're, they bought, seems to be about three, four years ago. They bought the property. Sorry. And it's gone downhill since then. It's a mess. Again, they don't mow the lawn, they don't take care of it. Looks like the gutters are falling off. The house is a mess. I can't believe they wanna make that little house into a two-family. I don't know where they're gonna park. So I am absolutely against having that property be turned into a multi-family because that's what it's gonna be.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else opposed on the side? Second call? Third call, call that, oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. I got some letters here. Uh, written to my op, opposition to the variance request one twenty-six. But those lines from William Nappy, twenty-two Avon Way. Lucian Russell, four Avon Way. He got himself patient with zone of variance. Sorry, here's the plans. He would like to note that I do not object to having a two-family home, but I am disappointed that the plans indicate a small one-bedroom basement apartment and a large three-story second apartment. Also, I question the plan, pave over the front yard and squeeze in cars in the narrow street. The apartment extend the common driveway down the back of the property, including some drainage and drain water. I have a letter here from Christian Hughes, counselor, one sixty-two President's Lane. Please make this part of the record, thanks. This is from, was forwarded to Christian, which mailed it to our clerk. It's from Judy Cady, proposal one sixty-two, President's Lane. Hi, Mr. Hughes. Because I am unable to attend the public hearing scheduled for evening on October tenth in regards to one twenty, one sixty-two President's Lane. I would like to express my opposition to two-family home, but a little much, was not happy about. Call that part of the hearing closed. You know, could that be a two-family house? I, yeah, it could be in a different location, not there. It's just, there's no parking, there's no rooms for more parking. And I just can't even see it working. I think it's just a detriment to the neighborhood and I can add a two-family. I let me vote now.
Likewise. Insufficient parking, we're done. Way too tight in the neighborhood, insufficient parking, I'll be voting no.
I agree. Counsel?
I disagree with your law, which are.
Motion to withdraw, we're off to our mission.
Mr. Chairman, the guy in case number Z seventeen ninety-four. And so for variance finding that changes the use from a one-family to a two-family is not substantially detrimental in variances for lot size with the width F A R and paving on the front yard setback, I request that it be withdrawn or rejected.
Second?
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Page number Z seventeen ninety-five. Gorm Fire Appliance Company for variance finding to demolish the existing two-family house and construct, the existing two-family house and construct a new two-story addition and expanded parking lot on existing business premises, sweet eight, command to Willard Street. Who's in to be said?
I'll be open, all right, I get it.
Have a good night, you stand? You stand, who stands? You bear so?
No, I'm in.
All right.
Here we go. Mr. Ray Dell, you jumping in?
He's got a gun up.
Okay. Counsel, we're good. Counsel, your.
Mr. Chairman, good evening. For the record, Christopher Harrington. My law office is the twenty-one McGrath Highway. I represent Robert and William Gorm for the owners of the Gorm Fire Appliance Company. Mr. Chairman, this application, as you stated from the description of the, the Z B A application, we're asking for a finding and dimensional variance to demolish an existing two-family house and construct a new two-story addition and expanded parking lot on the existing business, which is in the Business B zoning district. And this is the Gorm Fire Appliance Company property, which is on Willard Street in West Quincy. The address of this property is two eighty-eight and two ninety-two Willard Street. Those are the, the commercial building as well as the two-family house, the combined addresses. Robert and William Gorm are the owners of the Gorm Fire Appliance Company. This business has been in business for seventy-five years and located at this address since nineteen seventy-two for over forty-five years. In December of ninety-three, these applicants applied for a permit to put an addition on the back of the building on Crescent Street side of the property. And then in nineteen eighty-four, excuse me, nineteen ninety-four, they purchased a two-family house next door from the owner who had the property at that time. This project is about improving the Gorm Fire Facility's building and improving the working conditions for the owners as well as the employees who work at this company. I'd like to call your attention to the floor plan. On plan D D one, which is the first floor plan, this is the existing building right here. This is the addition off the back. And of course, in the darker color is the new addition. Right now, the receptionist, there, there are five employees who weren't on this property every day. The two owners, the receptionist, two technicians who are working on the fire extinguishers in the back. So the, the two technicians are in this area here, the workshop and the storage area back here, as well as in this area here. The receptionist is here and both owners are crammed into tiny cubicles where their desks are in the back corner here.
One sec.
So the purpose of this expansion is to make this building more usable for the, for the owners, for their employees, as well as their customers. So the two owners are going into brand-new offices here. There's a new reception area, a waiting area for customers, a break room for employees or kitchenette and toilet and, and office storage here. And there's more storage on the second floor and more space for other offices if they, if they need them in the future. But the purpose of this project is, the owners don't expect this business to double in size in the next five years. And they're not putting this addition on because they want to double the size of the business or double the number of employees or the number of customers that they have. They crammed into very tight space and they wanna build real office space for themselves, which I think they deserve after forty-five years of, of running this business in our city. So this project is about adding a new reception area for customers, kitchens, break rooms, bathrooms, office spaces, storage space for the owners. And, and as I said, they're not anticipating there's gonna be a huge increase in the number of employees or customers. It's also about improving the parking lot layout, the driveway for the stormwater management system on this property, increasing the number of parking spaces. And they're reconfiguring the site to move the entrance, the driveway and the customer parking away from the Crescent Street side of the property. So on the new, on the new plan, the doorway where all the customers enter the property is right here. The new entrance will be over on this side of the building. And so the driveway will be here, customer parking in this area with the door for all the people to enter there. So they're trying to, they're planning on installing, you know, new fencing along Crescent Street, fixing up the landscaping that's along the side of the building here, as well as new fencing here and then landscaping on the corner. And the idea is to just clean up this whole side of the property. So the only thing on this side of the property, the two parking spaces that they.
All that tower at the end?
Yes.
They're gonna landscape all that?
Yes. The, the only, the only parking that will be on Crescent Street side of the property will be the two spaces that are here that are used by the, by the owners every, every day. All of the customer activity and the employee activity will be on the opposite side of the property.
What's the increase in parking?
We're gonna have, we've got thirteen parking spaces and we're required to have ten spaces by the zoning ordinance on, based on the size of the building.
How many do you have before?
I don't know how many spaces there are now because the parking lot's completely disorganized and unstriped and it's, it's just a mess. So our plan is to demolish the two-family house. The two-family house has two thousand three hundred and forty-eight square feet of living area, not including the basement. Each apartment is, is a three-bedroom apartment. And there are four park, and four parking spaces are required for this house. That's going away. We're constructing a two thousand five hundred and ninety-two square foot addition, which is the new space on the new building, slightly larger than the house that's coming down, but not by much, only a couple of hundred square feet. Total area of this project is less than five thousand square feet, new and old, when the project is finished. The zoning in this neighborhood is Business B. Four stories is allowed and a one-point-five F A R. This is a two-story building. The F A R is point four-two, which is less than one-third of the size that will be allowed on this property by Business B zoning. It's a two-story commercial building, as I said, four thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven gross square feet floor area when it's all finished. And the entire property is storage, workshop and office space for this company. So the benefits of this project are that we're removing an ugly, rundown, existing two-family house, combining the two lots into one eleven thousand nine hundred square foot lot. We're gonna be improving the appearance and the value of the Gorm building and property, improving the appearance of Willard Street with new fencing, landscaping, lighting. We're gonna add new growth in the commercial tax base, which benefits the city and residential taxpayers. Quincy gets to retain and establish local business and retain the jobs that are at this company as we speak. We're asking for a variance review, findings altering non-conforming construction, but also a variance. The variance that we're asking for, the front setback of the building, the existing building is one and a half feet off the lot line. The new building follows in line with that same one and a half foot setback. So the variance we're asking for is to have a one-point-five foot setback on the front of the new addition. And we believe, I submit to you, that this case has everything that's necessary for you to grant a variance for this addition. The soil conditions, shape and topography of this property are all present. It's an unusual lot shape and it has unusual topography, which are required for you to grant a variance. It has both of those. The project's not detrimental to the neighborhood because the new floor area of the addition is offset by the floor area that's removed from the two. is offset by the floor area that's removed from the two-family, which is going away. The property is also going to be an improvement of what's there now, from the parking lot and engineer stormwater management system, which is currently not on the property, and the added number of parking spaces to serve the employees and the customers of this business. I'd like to introduce our project's civil engineer to describe to you the existing conditions on the site, as well as the stormwater management system that he designed for this property. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. For the record, my name is Phil Buckley from the Colony Group. And I'll just talk to you very briefly through some of the items that I was asked to look at for the project. As Counselor Harrington talked about, the fact is, is it's going to be removing that building, the existing single family, or duplex, which is located in this portion right here. Here's the existing building. And currently, the site is access between the two buildings. So what we'll be doing is removing that access. And now the new access will be over here on the right side. And actually, this point, point there, is if you look right here, that's what you'd be looking at if you pulled into the driveway. You'd be looking at it right here. So that's where the look you'll get, looking, coming in from the south on Willard Street. And then we expect any people pulling into the site will park in the rear and access the building in this location here. As you mentioned, there are going to be 13 parking spaces in the back, along the back line, a few along the Crescent, and then several along the building in that area I just pointed out. Right now, there's no stormwater management system. The site's kind of like a bowl in the back there. What there is, is this one leaching pit that was installed, I don't know how many years ago. So what we'll be doing is removing that, removing that. And as part of rebuilding the parking lot and regrading it, in this area here, we'll be putting in a subsurface infiltration system. We've done soil testing in the back there. The soils will support and the water table as well. And as part of the LID, which we, I know Quincy likes to integrate into their designs, this system will have several elements. The first is, is all of the roof runoff will be captured in the downspouts and then brought directly into that system. The second is, is the runoff that comes down from the asphalt in the parking lot will go through a sediment for bay, which is kind of like a catch basin, and then into a treebox filter in the back there, which cleans the water, and then it will eventually go into the infiltration basin. So the system is, you know, what's currently there is a pit, and then we'll replace it with 18 rechargeers. So substantial upgrade on the volume we'll be able to handle. And right now, there's no water quality at all. We'll be able to bring the water quality into compliance with the DEP stormwater standards. So that's...
Any questions?
All right, good.
Question regarding the loading base, I'm not sure if that's for you or for the country or for counsel.
Sure. And this area here, this area, it looks like it's a building, but actually, we've striped that up. That's going to be the loading and receiving area. So we don't get truck trailers, but that's where the vehicles will come in and park, and then they'll be loaded and unloaded. So we've set that area aside, and it's not in an area that blocks anybody that would be parking in there.
How close is it to the closest dwelling?
To the closest dwelling?
Yeah.
Um... Building itself, is that what you're trying to measure from?
The loading, definitely, but, you know, trucking that up and whatever hours you're doing here. I'm loading.
About 170 feet to this building right here. I don't know what's across the street. Goes on twomings, though, right?
Yeah, there's some homes on Crescent Street. The opposite side.
I'm guessing, this is going to be a guess, maybe 120 feet from that loading area? No other questions?
So we're talking about the small loading vans, more, you know, like an E350?
Just service, right?
Okay.
No questions?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
That's it. So what are we doing down on the end there? What are we putting in down where the end of the building? Shrubbery and stuff, what's down the end?
Right now, there's nothing down. It's okay.
Okay.
And areas that we're not showing, so along the front, we're putting shrubs and plantings. And then down in this area here, which is access, and that area there, which is planted on grass.
So you're going to take that all off and put in grass? No shrubs, no nothing? Good for some. Any other questions, the applicant, anyone?
Yep.
All right. So you've got 11 spaces in the back with those two on Crescent, correct?
Yes.
All right. So the floor is just a mix-up.
Mr. Chairman, we could submit a landscaping plan to just do if it is approved for that corner, if that's something you want.
Yeah, we could do that. It's about time that's, that's all we do, the piece of property. All right, you can have a seat, I guess, counsel. Thank you very much. Does anyone want to speak in favor? Anyone speak in favor?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Sean Curry, Curry Hardwood, 370 Coquelin Street. I just want to speak in favor of the Gorhams, great family business. That corridor from our building, from Curry Hardwood down Willard Street, has been drastically changed over the past 10 to 15 years with the Galvin Construction Building tiles by perfection. It seems like everyone has done their two cents worth to dress up that area, and that building has been just an eyesore of that two-family house for quite a while. Mary Louz has done a great job over the past couple of years cleaning up that little corner, and now this is one of the last standing structures. It just looks a mess. So I'd like to give my thumbs up to the project, and hopefully we can dress up that end. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak in favor?
I'd like to speak in favor of this too. John O'Farrell, 62 Graham Mall Road. That is a very ugly house, so the city will be good to get rid of that. We're over the belt. We have too many dwelling units in the city right now. This is taking way too ugly dwelling units, and it looks like it's no more dense than the project was before, and that's kind of a gateway into Quincy. So you do want looking nice coming down Willard Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else? Second call, third call. I'll look out here when you close.
Listen to her.
Edith?
No.
I'll try to...
There it is. I told you I had that last one. I'm going to put in the last one.
This is from DPW. We have reviewed this facility above reference project, and our comments are as follows. Drainage, one, submit a stormwater report explaining how the surface runoff will be disposed and treated. Report should indicate, sorry, the report should include a maintenance plan for the drainage system. Two, submit a calculation to show how proposed infiltration structures have in size to infiltrate the required recharge valve volume that will drain in 72 hours. Three, submit soil test data for review. Four, the coltext chamber system should be 10 feet away from the property line. And with water, is there a sprinkler system to be installed? Two, specify the size of the new service pipe and install a curb stop valve and box on the sidewalk. Three, cut and cap existing water service at the connection with the mains. Sewer, one, install a clean-out for the sewer service pipe. The proposed clean-out for the sewer pipe should have two 22.5 degree elbows and 145 degree elbow. Details can be obtained by the city sewer department. Two, cut and cap existing sewers at the back of sidewalk. General, one, install stone or concrete survey monuments to delineate a public right-of-way. The monuments shall be sent by a professional land surveyor. Two, provide plan for the erosion and sedimentation control during construction. Three, the existing lots parcel should be consolidated into one lot parcel for development. The consolidation plan should be recorded in the registry of deeds in Northbrook County. Four, upon completion of the project, ad-built plans showing on utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, and benchmarks defining the total site facilities and right-of-ways need to be submitted along the digital tag file. The ad-built plans shall be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor or professional engineer.
Thank you.
Is there anyone opposed around the side? Opposed around the side, first call, second call?
I have a letter here from the counselor. Case number Z1795, 288, 292 Willard Street, the chairman of the county. It is with the deepest regret that I write to express my concern over the request by Gorham Fire pending before the zoning board of appeals. For long, as I have been a counselor, there has been an issue with their business parking vehicles on the sidewalks around their location on Willard Street and Crescent Street. It is clear that there is insufficient parking available to support the number of employees in operation at the current location. Additionally, it is my understanding that for many years, the owner has also owned the blighted eyesore property we usually adjacent to the location. I have suggested to them in the past that they should tear down the blighted residential property, and then they have let it fall into more disrepair to make more space for parking, to no avail. While I loathe proposing a project that would benefit beautifying Willard Street business corridor, I serious reservations about Gorham Fire's ability and willingness to manage parking and traffic if they were allowed to increase their building footprint. If they cannot currently park their vehicles in a safe and legal manner, I question what will happen if they have more employees or customers parking at a larger facility. I have expected this concern directly to the Gorham Fire, and have asked them, as a sign of good faith, to address the current parking conditions before proceeding with this request. They refuse to do so. Our zoning code was created in the past to prevent businesses and residential properties from overburdening areas with traffic and parking issues that they cannot manage their own property, on their property. I see no true hardship on this part of the Gorham Fire. There would be justification to grant a variance in a zoning, on our zoning regulations. I ask the board to allow our zoning code to do its work, to regulate the size of the building on this site and thus limit the negative impact on the area from growing worse than it already is. I'd love to support something from this applicant in the future that addresses the issues raised above, but unless, and until that time, I respectfully request that this application be denied sincerely, Brian Calmucci, what for counsel.
Call that part of hearing closed. I, I like the project. I think it's a good project. I hate that the counselor has bad words to say about one of the constituents in this. And, you know, we get a lot of letters from Brian. I wish he showed up here once in a while concerned and pressed instead of just writing letters. But it takes time, I guess, and maybe he's too busy. A lot of other counselors come here, and I think it adds a little more impact. I get a letter every week saying he's opposed to this project, that project. We had three letters tonight that he didn't show up to say so. What I would like to do is put this out for a couple of weeks. I'd like the applicant to sit there and meet with him and show him these plans. I don't know how you guys feel. I think it's a nice project. I think it's cleaning up the area. I think it's getting rid of the light. It's putting a water filtration system together. I think it's, it's a win-win, and I don't know what the counselor, I don't know, it's dark a while. You can tell by the letters, it's been going on for a while, but I don't even know, did he see these plans?
Yes.
He did. All right. So I'd just like them to go back and try to have a conversation. Just give us two weeks, and then we can sit down and make everyone a decision. How you guys feel?
Well, I like the project, and I just assume it's okay today, but if you want to get two weeks, probably.
I feel the same way. I don't see any downside to this project. I think it's a good project, and if we're voting today, I would be voting in favor.
I think it's great for the area, vast improvement over that house. It's unfortunate if Brian Calmucci feels that strongly about it, he couldn't have been there.
Well, and I want to have a conversation with myself if I could, if you guys would let me, and find out what's going on here. Maybe it's more than we know, I don't know. Couple of weeks, come back?
It's the same. If you voted now, I mean, in favor, but that's fine.
Yeah.
So it's where we now?
24th.
Yes.
And it's done with testimony, it's interupt.
Mr. Chairman, Madam 17-95, Gorham Fire Appliance Company, for a variance finding to demolish the existing two-family house and construct a new two-family addition and expanded parking lot on the existing business. The purpose is number 288 and 292 Willard Street. Quincy, I make a motion to be in the hearing October 24th.
Second. On the motion, CNN on favor?
Aye, close, so move.
Thank you. Two weeks, counsel?
Thank you. See you too.
Thank you.
Brother on the tonight's...
Hey, something's on the floor.
Under all bill, drop them. Ten yards. Mr. Frank was out?
No.
Mr. Ray Dell's in?
I know there's a reason I stuck around.
Case number Z17, Bay State Road LLC, variance allowed, build out the attic space in the front of 35 Bay State Road, Quincy. The applicant I'm representing is here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Brian Kelly, and I reside at 21 Pilgrim Road, Milton. I'm the manager of 35 Bay State Road LLC, owner of the two-family home located at 35 Bay State Road, Quincy. The property will be retained as a rental property, with no current intent to sell in the near future, as Michael de Dussel said, as a way, of to pay for college for my one-year-old son in the future. When we purchased the property in March of this year, it was discovered the roof was actually detached from the building and would require significant repairs. With the need to reconstruct the roof, we would also like to reconfigure the attic space as usual, living space. In order to do this, we would like to construct two 16-foot shed dormers, one each side of the house. As the board can see from the existing plans and proposed plans attached from the application, there will be no additional bedrooms created by the renovation. The attic will be turned into a master bedroom and master bath. Bedroom two on the second floor of the property will remove and the entire floor configured as expanded living room, dining room, and kitchen area. This is shown on Plan EX1. Exterior finish will remain the same. Dormers will be sized to match. As part of the renovation, we will move the chain link fence, clean up the shrub, bush, and landscape, the lot making the property more attractive to the neighborhood. The roof height will remain the same, and the building footprint remains the same. There are four parking spaces as required. As a note, the downstairs tenants do not own a vehicle. Application for relief to the board is related to the floor area ratio, which will increase from .44 to .56 in excess of the .4 called by the ordinance. The property has a prior existing non-conforming front setback of 14 foot, 14.45, and left-side setback of 7.65. The lot's lot size, height, minimum lot air per dwelling, green space, parking spaces, and number of units all remain the same. The project as completed will not be inconsistent with the neighborhood and will result in the property as more attractive in its current condition. On September 30th, I met personally with Mr. Harris, the ward counselor, to explain proposal, and he has expressed no objection to proposal. I provided him with a letter to use as a template to send to all the neighbors, introducing myself and providing contact information of any of the bidders' equations or concerns about the project. I have received no communication from the bidders or others. Mr. Harris scheduled a neighborhood meeting for Monday, October 9th, but informed me that morning of his inability to get the meeting through on a holiday. He indicated that he would write a letter in support, which I believe he sent this morning. If not, I have a copy here. And is available on call if anyone wants to speak to him in the meeting. the meeting. At this point, if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer, and thank you for your time and consideration.
When did you buy this property?
In March this year.
And who's living in the building?
We have two tenants in the bottom floor. The top floor, we have got a demo permit, and it has been demoed due to the roof structure. We had to take it apart to make it safe. We had to, there was no cross braces in the roof.
Or you bought it, you do this work, right? You knew that when you bought?
Yes.
And who's going to be living in there? Just new tenants, fifth tenants?
Yes.
I mean, that's a big dom, it's a big dom. I don't know what can happen downstairs, but it's a seven-point four. Keep it in both two bedrooms?
Yes.
All right, we put that to be two bedrooms? Okay. I have no further questions. Any questions? I have none. No questions?
None. I was just wondering if they could call Counselor Harris. It's like ten o'clock, right?
Yeah, there you go. So, I think you can have a speaker. Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor? No one here. One, two, three, close. Our respondents, I got a letter here from the D P W, they reviewed the reference project, have no comments. Anyone opposed on the side? One, two, three, close. I'll be voting in favor if we just put a two-bedroom dominance with the dominance in it?
Wait, wait.
Go ahead.
There's two bedrooms on the first floor. Oh, wait, wait.
You're removing a bedroom off the second floor.
I'm removing a wall, okay.
And then it's one and one.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay.
Anything else? Comment? Anyone else? Go.
Madam, seventeen-nine-six, Bay State Road LLC, forbearance allowed, but filled out with attic space on the Crescent, up at Thirty-Five Bay State Road, and make a motion to grant the variance of the condition that floating with will continue to be two bedrooms.
Second. On the motion, I got a little letter in here, it's a letter of Mr. Harris. Mr. Harris?
Yep.
From Mr. Kelly, ladies and gentlemen, in favor. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, someone will, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
The chairman made a motion to
Second, on the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you, gentlemen. Look it up. They might even